Meeting will please come to order. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Wilmette. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and thank you for joining us tonight. As I said, this is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Wilmette. We'll call the matters in the order which they appear on the printed agenda, and there are copies of the agenda on the table by the door, so you may want to have one so you can follow along to see when your matter we call. And if you plan to address us tonight, we ask you please come up to the podium, please speak into the microphone, tell us who you are and where you live, as that may be relevant to the matter at hand. We ask you to speak clearly into the microphone, so we can hear you, and because everything you say and everything we say is being recorded. From those recordings, minutes of the meeting are prepared, and these minutes are available both at Village Hall and on our website at wilmette.com. Also, our Village Board meetings are televised on local access Channel 6 and on the Internet. If you look up, you can actually see the cameras. The red dot indicates the active camera. By televising our meetings, we make it easy for our neighbors in the community to follow the proceedings of the Village Board, see the types of matters that come before us, the questions that we ask and the policies we create. You can find archived videos of Village Board and other local government meetings, again, on our website at wilmette.com. I'd like to personally thank all the residents of Wilmette who regularly tune into Channel 6 and pay attention to the workings of their local government. Now, before each meeting, the Board receives a packet of agenda materials. These materials are also posted on wilmette.com on the Friday before our meeting, so that residents and other interested parties can review the very same materials that the Board members received. This week's packet contained 827 pages. We've had an opportunity to review the information in the packet, so if you do plan to address us tonight, we ask that you tell us the most relevant, most material, the most important points you really want us to focus on. Finally, we are community neighbors, and as such, we want our meetings to be as civil and courteous as possible, so as a courtesy to those around you, please take this time to turn off your cell phones, which I'm trying to do myself right now, and your other devices. And while we're turning off our phones, would the clerk please call the roll? Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Kennedy?
Here.
Trustee Dodd?
Here.
Trustee Kersman?
Here.
Trustee Barrow?
Here.
Trustee Plunkett?
Here.
President Polinsky?
Here.
So we're all here. We obviously have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is Item 2, Public Comment. During public comment, individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address the Board on an item which is not on the agenda. Members of the audience may address the Board on matters which are on the agenda when the particular matter is called. So is there any member of the audience who would like to address the Board on any item which is not, I'm sorry, on an item which is not on the agenda? May I see a show of hands? Floor is yours. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. My name is Mark Wiremore. I live at 28 Lawndale. I've lived in Wilmette for about 20 years. I was heading over to Taco Tuesday at Valley Lodge across the street, and I noticed there was a Village Board meeting tonight, so I thought I'd come over and do my civic duty of speaking for three minutes about some issues. I've spoken before, so I know you guys enjoy it when I stop by here. I'd like to say hello to everybody out there on Channel 6. I know a lot of people watch this. I get a lot of feedback. People say, "Oh, we enjoyed what you said, Mark," or "We didn't like what you said." So, let me tell you just a couple of things. I'm going to be about two minutes. So, it's nine days till Halloween. If you're driving over on Lawndale Street, I have a pretty big Halloween display. It's all political. It's nonpartisan, but I have full-size political figures in my front yard. I appreciate if the Wilmette police could keep an eye on my place, because I have had some vandalism issues. Some people get kind of excited about politics in this area. So if you want to drive by, I've got Elizabeth, a full-size Elizabeth Warren, I have a Donald Trump, I have a Joe Biden, I have a Hunter Biden. It's just an interesting thing. And we'll be giving away, for the first 60 kids who come, big candy bars. So this is nine days from now, so be careful. Halloween's great in Wilmette. It's 64 days till Christmas, by the way. On other issues, I just wanted to mention property taxes. I'm very concerned about property taxes. Obviously, they're going up. You guys are talking about the levy and the budget. Ideally, what I'd love for you guys to do on the pensions is on new hires with the police, the fire department, village workers, is not have any pension, go to 401Ks or FICA, and try to maybe be leaders in the state of Illinois on the pension situation, and be the first village to really kind of phase out this pension thing that's destroying our state by not having new people go into the pension. So that's kind of my idea. I've been told you can't do it. Mark, you don't know what you're talking about, but other people say this is one of the solutions before we have a bankruptcy. I guess that's it. I see on the agenda that you're going to tax cannabis later. I'm not staying for the rest of the meeting, but a quick comment on that. I guess you're going to tax it, but I guess there's going to be a moratorium in Wilmette on not being able to sell it. So I hope that's the case. I don't want weed to be sold, marijuana, cannabis, whatever you call it. Ideally, it won't be sold here, or we're not near new any of our schools, so I oppose the sale of, I just call it weed, or marijuana. So ideally, you guys, I don't know why you're going to vote to tax it later in the meeting, but it's confusing. So thanks, and I appreciate it, and see what we can do to cut some of these property taxes, so we can stay in Wilmette a little longer. I appreciate it. Have a good evening. We'll be watching you on Channel 6 when I get to, ideally, it'll be on the TV at Valley Lodge, but we'll see.
I doubt that, but there is a World Series game tonight. I think that preempts Village Board meetings.
All right, and thanks for everybody working hard up here. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else that'd like to be heard? All right, we'll move on to Item 3, which is the Consent Agenda. As described on the printed agenda, items which are routine business that are not normally debated by the Village Board are placed on the Consent Agenda. All items beginning with the number 3 are on the Consent Agenda, so tonight, beginning on Page 1 with Item 3.1, all the items on Page 2, and then the first item on Page 3, which is Item 3.1.3. Items on the Consent Agenda are up for approval tonight. If an item's not removed by a member of the audience and is not removed by one of the trustees, the item will be approved and it will not be discussed. So I'll begin by asking if there's any member of the audience who would like to remove an item from the Consent Agenda. May I see a show of hands? Okay, I'll ask now, are there any trustees that would like to remove items from the Consent Agenda? Trustee Dodd?
Item 3.1.3.
Okay, so Item 3.3 is Adoption of Ordinance 2019-0-63 Amending Cannabis Regulations and Creating a Tax for the Retail Sale of Cannabis, Amending the Zoning Code to Include Cannabis Business Relationship, and Establishing a Moratorium on Cannabis Business Establishments. Any other items? Trustee Kennedy?
I'd like to remove Item 3.1.1, Introduction of Ordinance Amending the Village Code, Chapter 16, Nuisances.
Okay, so Item 3.1.1, Introduction of Ordinance 2019-0-67, I need my glasses. Amending Village Code, Chapter 16, Nuisances, to Include Delivery of Construction Materials Subject to Commercial Noise Regulations. See, that's been removed. Any others? Okay, hearing none. May I have a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda? Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Barrow?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
President Polinsky?
Aye. The motion carries Consent Agenda has been adopted, so if you're here for an item on the Consent Agenda, it was just approved. Let me know further discussion of those items or any of the other items on the Consent Agenda, so you are free to leave, but of course, more than welcome to stay. Now, if you are leaving, it's early, plenty of time to stop by one of our downtown restaurants, and there actually is an incentive now on the table. This is a $5 coupon. It's valid only tonight at certain participating restaurants in downtown, so Village Board meeting and then dinner downtown, what could be better, right?
So, we will now move on to Item 4, which is Report of Officers. First report tonight is from our Assistant Village Manager, Mr. Bremen, who's sitting in for Mr. Frentzer tonight.
No report, Mr. President.
The next report is from our Corporation Counsel, Mr. Stein.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Next up is Item 5, which is the Report of the Liquor Control Commissioner. There's no report tonight, so we'll move on to our Standing Committee reports. First up is Land Juice, which is Trustee Barrow.
All matters on the Consent Agenda.
Next up is the Finance Committee, Trustee Kennedy.
No report this evening.
The Administration Committee is Trustee Dodd.
All items on consent.
Municipal Services Committee is Trustee Sullivan.
All items were approved on consent.
Trustee Kersman has the Public Safety Committee.
All items on consent.
And the Judiciary Committee is Trustee Plunkett.
We have two items off consent, Agenda Item 3.1.1 and 3.1.3. Should I start with the first one? Okay. So Agenda Item 3.1.1, it's, how do I say this, move to introduce and subsequently adopt?
I think we just introduced, right?
Move to introduce.
Okay, move to introduce.
But we don't vote, so there's a motion?
There's still a motion to have the discussion, so yes. So we have a motion now to approve, a motion to introduce.
Okay.
Okay. Move to introduce Ordinance Number 2019-067, An Ordinance Amending Commercial Noise Regulations.
Okay, do we need a second?
We need a second.
Okay, so can I have a second, please?
Second.
All right, that's a little different than we normally do it, so. Trustee Kennedy, you asked for this one to be removed?
Yes, yes. The Agenda describes this particular ordinance as mostly relating to the delivery of construction materials, which create a substantial amount of noise and disruption in neighborhoods, and an attempt to add that to the things that can't be done outside of the normal hours for doing construction, which I think anybody would agree is a good idea. But actually, the ordinance as written goes a little bit farther, and that's where I have some concerns.
Well, so, hang on a sec. This is introduction, so we should debate and discuss when we're actually adopting it. And if there's concerns, you know, introduction, the point of introduction is to present it to the Board and to present it to the community, what we're planning to do in two weeks. And so, we're not going to vote tonight. We're not going to amend tonight, so certainly, you can express your comments here, but I just want to make sure we're not getting too far into it, because the approach would be to go to the staff and sort of express concerns, you know, if there's something in it, if you think we need to describe it differently, so that they can amend it, you know, and present it that way to the Board. You know, they could take your comments into, I just don't want to get too deep in the substance on a night when we're not.
No, I understand, and I don't want to take up a lot of people's time. What I was going to suggest is that we refer it to committee for consideration, rather than before we introduce it to the Board, and the reason that I would like to do that, I don't know whether appropriate commission, committee is the Municipal Services or the Judiciary Committee, is because it changes a longstanding rule in the village that we don't allow construction activities during certain hours, and it allows that those restrictions to be waived by the village engineer in the case of village construction, and by the Community Development Commissioner in case of commercial and residential stuff, if they find it to be beneficial to the village and decide that it isn't sufficiently disruptive to the neighbors, without input of the people in the neighborhood. And that concerns me, and I think that that needs a little more study by, with the appropriate committee before it's introduced.
So, yeah, just to clarify. My understanding isn't actually a change of policy, it's the existing policy being clarified, as opposed to a change in policy, but is that the case?
Well, I can discuss the policy. So the current, well, not the policy, the current ordinance allows for the village engineer to state that there is a matter of urgency and construction can be performed at any time that the village engineer deems is appropriate, and that is both proactive and reactive, so he wouldn't file us, he wouldn't give a citation if there was emergency work being done and it had to absolutely be done at that time. This change in the ordinance essentially does two things. It gives the authority, it splits the authority between the village engineer for public right-of-way and publicly owned, or village-owned property, which is traditionally the realm of the engineering department. For whatever reason, in the history of this ordinance was the engineer was covering private property as well, commercial residential property. Well, the Community Development Department is actually the appropriate department that actually handles the complaints anyway. The code enforcement officer is the one that would still write citations for violations of this ordinance, so at staff, we believe that this was an appropriate division, but it's not really changing the policy. The only other aspect is where it says for the benefit, for the beneficial, that's beneficial to the village. Construction can occur that's beneficial to the village. There's a certain amount of discretion already given to village staff in these situations that they can use already. Urgency, the word urgency. Urgency is a discretion to the village staff, and we are just essentially codifying what is already a practice. So, for example, the village engineer has already allowed minor construction to happen at Panera Bread during their reconstruction, or during their remodeling at certain off-hours, because it is beneficial to the village that a public amenity like that stays open, that a sales tax, sales taxes are still collected. Going forward in the future, if there's a major renovation project, let's say, at Edens Plaza, we would want the village engineer or the Community Development Director to be able to allow for that construction to happen at pretty much elongated times, so it happens faster, so the construction doesn't delay. This is a practice that's been occurring in the village since the last 10, 12 years. When I had the opportunity to include, or I was given the direction to include delivery of construction materials into this ordinance, I felt it was a good time to clean it up. That's all this is, is a cleanup. It is not a policy change, so.
I guess, I don't think this is the appropriate place to argue it, but I've listened to what Mr. Sinus said, and we've had email exchanges on it. It seems to me that it does go farther than just codifying what is already the practice, unless the practice is to define urgent necessity as anything that the village engineer thinks is beneficial, and I'd be surprised if that is the current policy. We're about to embark on a lot of construction in the village, whether it's the road program, the central business district program, the changes at Skokie and Lake, the Edens Plaza, the, I mean, just go, it goes on and on, the storm sewer and the sewer lining and et cetera, et cetera. And if this policy change, or this change in the language were to occur, the engineering department could decide to do that work on Sundays and holidays without any input from the residents that are affected by it.
But I guess my point of view on that is, I trust the staff to make good judgment here. That's their job, to do the day-to-day administration, and, you know, they're not going to have construction at 5:00 AM on a Sunday unless, you know, like, half the town's going to flood or something like that. I mean, I think at the end of the day, there's a certain amount of trust and discretion that is vested in the staff who does the day-to-day versus us where we're up here. I mean, so unless you want to codify, these are the circumstances under which the village engineer could approve something or not. That's, I think that's the difficulty, that you have to leave some level of discretion in the ordinance.
Oh, I totally agree, President Polinsky. It's not a question of taking away discretion, it's a question of whether we want to put restrictions and allow residents affected by the longer hours to have some say in it. And in any event, I just don't want it to be passed on the basis of a consent agenda without any discussion at all of what I, what seems to me could affect residents substantially, and that is a policy-level decision that's a board responsibility rather than staff.
But let me ask you a question. So, the staff believes that there should be construction on a Sunday on a road. How many residents that live on that road, and it's going to be an inconvenience, there's no question, but if you're suggesting there's a process where you ask the residents if it's okay, that sort of defeats the purpose, because by the time you go through the process, your time period's going to have lapsed. You know, and I think on certain things like Panera working at night or something like that, certainly, there's the opportunity for notice and the like, but I think, I think, I think this is a matter of discretion for the staff, and I hear your point of view on it. I just don't think there's that big a change, so I don't think it, I don't think it merits being, we can discuss it in the meeting, and you could certainly bring up the concept, but I don't think it merits being referred to a committee to discuss what we can talk about in the Board meeting, so.
And if I could just add to Jeff's point earlier, that this is not a change in policy, we've been practicing this for some time now. When we do grant approvals to work outside those hours, there are conditions upon those approvals, so only certain types of work can be performed, so for example, you can't be delivering materials at 3:00 AM if you're at Panera, you can't be jackhammering at 3:00 AM, but there's certain agreed-upon work, and it's always revocable, and that's always very clear when the village engineer grants those extended hours, that if we get any complaints from a resident, even one, we would reserve the right to revoke those extended hours immediately, and we have in the past. So this is just consistent with that past practice. We are always taking input from residents, we are listening to their concerns, and I can't recall a time in the 10-plus years I've been here where we've ever extended hours, residents have complained, and we continue to extend ours. If there have ever been complaints, we've immediately rolled those back and followed the code.
So I guess, Trustee Kennedy, you can make a motion to refer this to a committee, and we could have a vote, or we could just wait until two weeks from now. It's sort of at your discretion, correct?
That's absolutely correct.
I think I would move to refer it to the appropriate committee, as President Polinsky decides is most appropriate.
Okay, is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second?
I'm happy to second, and then we'll take a vote, or I'll second it. I mean, just in order to take a vote, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Is there any further discussion?
Well, I think that's what I'm confused on, because I thought you said we would wait to discuss this until next week.
I think you could refer to a committee.
Right, the discussion right now would be just whether we're referring to a particular committee or not, so this isn't a discussion about the content of the ordinance.
Yeah, so I think, I think given Trustee Kennedy's point of view on this, there was a little discussion around, you know, what the substance is and should it be, because her point was, we should refer it, so we had a little discussion there related to that, not to the specifics of the ordinance.
Could we, just as another option, you know, in two weeks, we can have a further discussion on this and vote on it. I mean, the seven of us have had lengthy discussions on issues. Could we have the village engineer kind of explain what the practice has been, when this will be used? I mean, I think it would be helpful to, you know, have some more details to explain this, because as Trustee Kennedy is correct, there will be a lot of construction next year. We just had a budget meeting, and, you know, we are excited about a lot of construction, but I think, you know, it would be kind of a good heads-up as to how this is, how the practice is going to be. Now, I know this isn't what Trustee Kennedy requested, but I'm asking, you know, in lieu of that, if that fails, if we could have, you know, more of a discussion with an engineer in two weeks.
Yeah, no, I think that, I think that makes sense. Given that it's introduction and we had a light agenda, you can see there aren't many staff members here tonight, so.
And I'd just like to say, I'd like to, I agree with Trustee Plunkett. I think that, I think given what's happening next year, I think it's worth us having a discussion and be more familiar with what's the issues that Trustee Kennedy has brought up, and so I would support what Trustee Plunkett said.
So we'll take it off consent at the next meeting, and we'll ask Dan Manis to make a presentation.
And Mr. Adler as well.
And Mr. Adler as well, so.
That's fine with me. I'm not really wedded to any particular process, I just don't want this sort of thing to go undiscussed, given the level of activity we're going to have, and the fact that, at least in my opinion, that is, whatever the practice has been, it is not supported by our ordinance, which, and so I think it is a change in policy, at least on paper, because there's nothing in the ordinance that says that the engineer can extend working hours except in the case of urgent necessity.
Is that the language, urgent necessity or urgency?
Urgency, urgent necessity.
I'd be happy to quote it. It says, "Except in case of urgent necessity as determined by the village engineer," and that's the sole standard in the current ordinance. So I, if we want to discuss it at two weeks from today, that's fine, too, you know, whatever.
So you want to withdraw your motion?
Sure, I withdraw the motion.
Okay, so that motion's been withdrawn.
And I'll, yes.
And so it'll be off consent at the next meeting, and we'll have a presentation from Mr. Adler and Mr. Manis to discuss sort of what the practice is and how they utilize it today. Fair enough?
Sure.
Okay, all right. So the ordinance has been introduced, and there's no further action to take.
Okay, so now the next for Judiciary. Busy night.
Busy night?
It's unusual.
That might be, that's maybe, might be a personal best, two ordinances off consent from Judiciary.
All right, so the next, now this is not move to introduce, this is move to.
Move to approve.
Move to approve, an ordinance amending cannabis regulations and creating a tax for the retail sale of cannabis, amending the zoning code to include cannabis business establishments, and establishing a moratorium on cannabis business establishments. Oh, it's, so move to introduce and adopt ordinance 2019-063, and what I just described.
Right, okay, so there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Trustee Dodd, you asked this one to be removed?
Yes, so I asked this to be taken off consent. First of all, just since there's several things layered into this particular adoption, I don't have any concern with us amending the cannabis regulations and creating a tax for the retail sale. I also don't have any issues with us amending the zoning code to include cannabis business establishments. My questions are really around establishing a moratorium on the cannabis business establishments. So I actually support us doing a moratorium. I can understand why we're trying to do that. I think there's a lot of reasons for us to just take a pause, understand what's happening within other communities, learn from that before we decide what to do within our own community, so I support the moratorium. My question is more around the fact that, as part of this moratorium, it appears that we then are recommending that we also do a referendum to get input from the community, and I just wanted to voice and say that I'm not sure whether I do or do not support a referendum. I feel like a discussion by the Board at some point before we march down the path of actually doing a referendum would be helpful. I think, you know, who's to say what we're going to learn within the next six to nine months, once some of these local communities adopt things, so we could learn, I'm not saying, you know, that, there is more crime as a result of a business establishment having cannabis in their area or whatever, and so that might guide us to a decision that where we would not need to do a referendum. And so I guess I just would like to have our corporate counsel, Mr. Stein, clarify for us, because I'm confused as I read the memo now, it appears that, it says, "The moratorium is set to expire automatically on June 30, 2021, which would allow the village the necessary time to properly discuss and determine the policy based upon the results of the referendum." And so I just want to make sure that this, that we're not tied to do a referendum as a result of what we're putting in place.
So you're absolutely not tied to do a referendum at all? So the moratorium is set, we're essentially, we're keeping the status quo up until June 30th, 2021, but also the moratorium can be lifted at any point prior to that.
By action by the Board.
By action by the Board, or it can be extended by the Board. The reason for the moratorium per President Polinsky's declaration in one of the meetings was, was because to have a referendum. We could not do the referendum today, we cannot do it today because the Illinois Election Code does not allow for it to happen this far in advance of a November election. If we did it today, I don't even know if we can do it in the March election today.
No, you can't.
So, right, I think it's 90 days, so there will be another, there will need, be another need for Village Board action to essentially adopt a resolution if we want to put a referendum on the Board. We are not bound by that.
And I think what Trustee Dodd is suggesting is, let, it's not, let's have a conversation about it as opposed to it just showing up on the agenda and saying we're voting on it tomorrow.
Yes, I don't want the staff to spend time or, you know, putting together a potential referendum and then come in front of the Board and then be, and then hear some particular sentiment that we may or may not be in favor of it. So I'm just asking, and I'm just raising the question that I would like the staff, and I guess the rest of the Board, to know that I am not confident today how I feel about doing a referendum, and I would just like that, the people to be aware so we discuss it before we proceed too much down that path.
Noted, that's noted.
So just, just for the record, if that's your only objection, there's nothing that needs to be changed in the ordinance. There is no requirement for a referendum in the ordinance.
Okay. Even though the ordinance mentions a referendum?
The ordinance mentions a referendum and the reasoning for it, but there still is another action by the Village Board required.
Right.
So it doesn't kill the moratorium, it doesn't require us to do the.
It does, it does direct the staff to place a resolution authorizing it, don't direct us to approve it.
Right.
And, you know, as you guys may be aware, I have the authority to do that, any department has the authority to do that, and a committee of the Board has the ability to do that as[1692.87] well, so it's not, you know, purely this is the only direction.
I'm fine with that, I just like...
Yeah, yeah, no, and your point's taken, you wanted to make sure in advance, because you're quite right that had we gone into July or whatever, and August was the date for the referendum deadline, we would likely toss it on consent and just go forward, and now we're on notice, so we won't do that.
Okay, and then, thank you. And then just one more thing, which is not necessarily related to this particular adoption of the ordinance, but related to the concept, so I don't know, I had another conversation with corporate counsel today about just education we're going to do of the community around, you know, what's going to happen January 1st, and again, I'm, could you just share with us, corporate, corporate counsel, what we're planning to do?
Communications question.
Just because I think it'd be helpful for the community to hear this.
So we're working with our communications team on a communications plan, and it's twofold, one is we'll make sure we communicate to our residents that there has been a moratorium placed, assuming we approve that tonight, so that the community knows not to expect a retail cannabis establishment next year. But then two is just the education in terms of where and when cannabis is allowed to be used in public, what it means in terms of a DUI, so that our residents understand what is changing within the law and how it impacts us here in Willmet.
So it's really an education around, while there's a small portion of it that is education around our action, it sounds like the larger portion of it is really what's the change in state law, and how does that apply to all of us?
And I think that'll be really helpful for the community, so thank you so much for doing that.
It's a great suggestion.
Mr. Bremen, will you do that through, is that going to be a page one of the communicator?
Yeah, we'll use our normal communication vehicles, so the communicator, our social media sites, our e-news, we can use our utility bills depending on what the message is, that might not be appropriate for this, but our standard communication vehicles, I think, will be effective.
We did discuss on Friday through Judiciary Committee, communication through the police department as well, especially in terms of enforcement and DUIs and, you know, having people understand that, because it's not as clear-cut as alcohol.
And we get a really good following and open rate on our police email communications and on their social media, so we'll use those heavily to make sure that we're pushing that information out.
Do residents have to go through an additional training? Restaurants?
Restaurants?
Not that I'm aware of.
So I think it'd be really helpful as we get to the point where we're obviously putting that on e-news or whatever, and I'm sure you guys will do this, but just to share that with the board, because I think we will likely get, start to get some questions, so I would appreciate hearing about that.